We have another seven minutes of the 21st. We're not on the agenda of any of that. They need to work this out, but we have September 30th. It's approved, what's your pleasure? I have a motion of adjournment. Say it's by Terry to approve. All in favor? Vote for him and again. Your financial statement? Any questions? Anything of motion to approve the financial statement? Terry, I said. Any second, all in favor? Vote for him again. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public request to counsel at this time? If so, you have five minutes to approach your counsel and talk to them about whatever you'd like to talk to them about.
He's not talking about me yet.
Okay. Departmental reports? Roy?
We've been working on the new park. We've done a little bit of grading. The county brought, well, their boat graders down here and left it with us for a while, a little bit used in it. We got the area that was not fenced, fenced now. We started general maintenance on our fire hydrants, oiling them and testing the flow. We'll be color coding the top of the hydrants shortly for our flow. And we have these markers that you see around other cities, Sherman and so forth. They're blue. Marker goes in the middle of the street, indicates where fire hydrants are, so they won't have to be looking for them. It's just little reflective tabs. We got some street work to do. We're gonna be working on two and 300 blocks of North Hughes. We've got some dips in there that is dished out and we'll be working on those and some other places around town. We've had several water leaks over the past 30 days due to dry weather. Nothing real big or that we couldn't handle in a short period of time. We do have one item of concern. Ray Davis and Midtex Controls has never installed our electronic controls for the new ground storage tank with the tower. So when the tower calls for it, it will automatically come on. This was a separate contract. We can't get anything out of him except promises. We contacted Mark Weaver, J&amp;M Maintenance Company, out of Lewisville for a bid and he was here this last Thursday, I guess it was, and will be giving us a price on him installing the controls.
So I have ten minutes reports. Terry, how many flood shots do you have?
Fifty-four, low and thirty-one million shots. But, yeah, something else. Friday, October 29th, the TMC, Regal McIntyre Mobile Unit will be parked at the community center and it will be there from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00. The cost per manogram is $75, but if you have insurance, run your insurance card and your Medicare card.
Thank you for that report. Looking at old business, we have back on the agenda today a request for update on the requested deannexation by JW Hall. Think we managed to get all that we could for you from that, from the legal department at the top. Went over and looked at it, I didn't see that anything had changed really from what it was a lifetime ago. We have to, we need to discuss that.
So the problem is that you don't get anything from the city at all?
Nothing.
But the tax bill?
But the tax bill, Billy Joe. Now Ray has told me this, sure, you can tie him to City Sur, run your land, you know? Include the lift station and no telling what all. And it just isn't feasible for the city or for me to be in it. It just makes no sense to either one of us. The question is that there, that you can't cut, if you took my property out, it would isolate another area west of me. That area is in the same situation I am. The city provides no utilities and nor does it plan to. There is no reason for it to be in either. And the, this was done many, many years ago when times were different and it just isn't feasible anymore for it to be as it is. There is a process that this can be changed. And I would be more than willing to do the legwork, do whatever is necessary to change this.
You don't get any trash pickup or nothing?
No. No.
But you're not having to pay for trash pickup?
No.
Dorchester water?
Mm-hmm. So the city of How Can Ever Furnish Me Water?
You're right out there at the coal, or Mr. Coal.
Yeah, I'm west of there. I'm directly behind Jim Ford. See, Jim Ford, right in front of me, is not in the city limits, not in anybody's city limits. There's no city taxes, neither do the Rogerses down the street. They're not in anybody's city limits. Down at the old Coleman place, I believe. I believe their home is where the old Coleman place was.
And you're right behind that?
No, I'm behind Jim Ford. Own further down in the brick house.
Okay.
There's just no reason for it to be in the city limits. It would be okay with me for it to be in the ETJ, but see, we have situations out there that are unique to being away from the area. The, I guess they got possums and what have you in town too. And I can't even go out and defend my dogs from coyotes because it's against the law of fire god. You know, I can't build a dog pen without a permit and inspections on it. There's a lot of disadvantages and there's no redeeming value to it.
When this was annexed, or asked to be annexed in the 60s, if I remember right, you had the same situation that you have now. There were no services then. The owner of this land, all this land down through there, asked us to have that annexed and it was annexed. And from what I'm told by the people in the legal department is that the statute of limitations on them asking to come out of annexation had expired a long time ago. And so they, they're not subject to any new laws by the legislature. This is a part of what was established by the highway.
Will?
If, if they're not, if they're in the city limits and they're not getting any, anything from the city, is it right to really charge them taxes?
Nothing wrong about it.
They weren't getting anything from the city when they asked to be annexed.
They were getting protection from being annexed into the Sherman city limits, Billy Joe, because it was during the dispute over Magna Fab and Sherman was jumping 902 and Al was jumping 902. And they settled all that and came to an agreement of some kind on where each city limits would stop.
How much, how much taxes we're talking about?
Well, my taxes on my home, it were 115 something a year and I'm buying another 13 acres with a new appraisal on it. Billy Joe, I don't know what they're gonna be, outlandish.
$114 on his home. $134 on the additional 14 acres.
Well, the-
That's what they-
But that was under an old appraisal and it was also locked in because the owner was 65. You know, that certainly is gonna change.
This land was in the city when you purchased it?
Yes, yes it was. And here's some, some of those people here, this, I plan to do some, possibly sell some lots out there. And it's going to be real difficult for me to look somebody in the eye and say, "You're gonna have to pay taxes on this new home and you're not gonna get nothing."
Are you saying that the police department refuses to come out there?
No, no. In fact, the police department has been to my house.
You have fire protection, police-
Well, so does Gunnar Dorchester.
Pardon me. You have fire protection, police protection and trash pickup at your request, is that correct? If you wanted it to-
Okay, I'm just now hearing about that. There was, Ray and I talked about that once before and I said, "How would you charge me for it?" Because it goes in on your Sur Bill, it goes through your water, which I can't get water. I mean, I can't get Sur. And he said that they would call Dorchester about the water that I used or something.
If it were Sur. Trash, it would be a separate bill. And one other thing that you are reaping the benefit of, or should be if you're not, is the fact that you are within the city limits and you get the same fire insurance rate, which is a rating of six. If you're not within city limits, it goes to a 10. So you save about 40% on your fire insurance on your home.
Well, through, and that's prob, I'm sure that's true according to your information, right? But on that mobile home, it's mine, I have a double wide mobile home out there and I have not found that to be true. The distance from the nearest fire meter is what mine have gone by. And I've had two different carriers since I've been out there trying to take advantage of just what you're talking about and I haven't been able to.
I believe it's supposed to be that way, anyone within the city limits.
Well, you know, my carriers, you know, I need to stand on their neck.
We had a lady call today that her insurance was 1,900 and some odd dollars a year. And, you know, if they can, they're going to.
Well, mine's, mine's over seven. Ray, mine's over seven, so, you know, if she's got much home at all, I understand that.
I think we all understand the issue here. Is there anyone that wants to grant the request on Mr. Hall for deannexation? Do they have a motion for it?
I got a question. If, if we vote yes on this, what will keep Sherman from coming out?
This would be within our ETJ. But if you do this, you have to, the others, because it has to be continuously connected. And it's been looked at, maybe a strip along the back side. And I hadn't seen you since then, but in checking, if you do annex, it has to be 1,000 foot in width that you retain, just the same as it does if you annex. You can't strip annex anymore.
Well, how did we annex that 150 foot from Joe Perkins' zone to Farmington Road?
That's the old-
Am I annexed under 53046, Ray? Uh, Mr. Mayor? Is that, am I, did I understand you at the last meeting correctly to say that that's what y'all would be looking at?
I believe that's the number. I would have had it before me here, but this is what, you know, what you got out of the code book, or what Austin gave us, would have looked at. This is twice that we have been to them and asked this question.
Okay.
And they have told us the same thing both times. If, you know, if you come and ask five years, maybe after you got in to be deannexed and the services weren't being provided, you could come out. But after the statute of limitations went by, there's, you know, that's up to the council to do that.
Okay. Then, then this is gonna be my stand, that I am not now, nor was I ever, in the city limits of How, because according to 53046, the ordinance that you gave me doesn't fulfill the, doesn't satisfy the letter nor the intent of that legislation.
I don't know what is that number now. All I know is that we contacted-
Well, Ray, we discussed that in your office that day?
We contacted the legal department in Austin twice, three years ago.
Have looked the ordinance up where it was annexed.
Three years ago and then again, a while back, and then again this last week and asked them to send it in writing so the council could see it. If that was done and we get the same thing, he can-
Are they looking at a copy of the ordinance?
They said there hadn't been any laws that would change something that far back.
Okay. Then let's go under 53046. One more time, I'll request for a service plan agreement in writing, signed by those who asked to be annexed.
There was no service plan required at that time.
53.046, clearly asked for one.
Very likely it's not 53.046 that you were annexed under. We do need to get that information so we have a correct number.
Until we clarify that, I am not in the city limits, nor have I ever been.
Well, that is again, a matter of opinion, I'm sure.
Well, it certainly is.
You must be, or you wouldn't be paying city taxes.
No, it was an oversight originally, is exactly what it was. It was an error made by legal counsel for a city passed long since. Not here. And they made the mistake back then and we're having to deal with it.
Let's just put it this way, is there anyone interested in deannexing Mr. Hall's property to make a motion to do so?
If we, if we do this, this takes all of this other-
Can I, can I, Billy Joe? See what you're looking at?
This here, if we do this, right in here, everything is sorted, right here. This is your, see, I own this and this and I'm under contract providing this.
That would be annexed least, on your first-
Can I ask one more? This is a question, I don't know whether it's legal or not. If you take somebody out of the city, it doesn't have no city water or Sur or any, any kind of, what if you just get it annexed out there and collect the taxes?
Abate our taxes, that's all I'm asking for. Abate my taxes, we have to do that.
Can't do that.
They do some service, the police body, and they got water from Dorchester. We were the ones that had to grant Dorchester the opportunity to serve up the water. They did that in 1988, I believe it was. But anyway, is, I mean, all of us know the situation.
It's arbitrary whether we get police protection or not.
All of us know the situation. Is there, if there wasn't a motion to grant, is there a motion to deny? We have a motion to deny. Is there a second? A second, Mr. Allison. All in favor of denying, raise your hand. One, two, three. Approve him? Did you get it? Okay. Okay, we have three ones.
Thank you for your time.
Billy Joe. The next item of business is to request to advocate for multiple year audit services contract. Yeah, we're, we're here to, to, on your audit contract.
We got three?
We have three. Will, y'all agree? This one is from Greg and company.
Greg just to get it, uh, about, yeah, the last one they did was four years ago.
This is from Bobby J. Brown. And this one is from Snyder Company. Okay, it's just one copy. Snyder Company, well, we can, all we need to do is read the, I think, read the estimation in audit to report before January 31st, 2000. Billy Joe, who's got the other company? Could you give us a figure on the estimation?
On the Greg and Company?
Yeah. Danny, would you write those down please for a minute? Greg and Company is $3,500. Who has it? Brown?
Bobby Brown's $3,700.
Okay, 3,750. And this one is Snyder and it is $3,900. You'll put this right here, you'll have us to see it an hour later. 3,900. All right, we have three things. Danny, would you read it to the council?
A figure from Greg and Company is $3,500. Bobby Brown is $3750. Snyder Company is $3900.
And Greg and Company are $3000.
Would you Snyder, you ask for that?
We had them for three years. We sent three separate auditors, you went each year. And each year that we got one, he did not approve of the changes that the one preceding year had made.
The $450 difference between the high and the low. You have to discuss it further and you have, you have a choice.
Based upon the knowledge that I have, is I don't know what city it is, whether it was logical or would you, it was simply-
We're supposed to get the same results outside. You need any more discussion or is everybody ready to vote? I think we have someone here ready to make a motion. A motion by different second possibility with Greg and Company. All in favor, raise your hands. Four? One, two, three, four. Opposed? There's a lowest deal. Okay, like five, four. All right. Let's find the sound of the tape and get on with this one. So it's awarded to Greg and Company. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve the 1999 tax roll values at $44 million and $28,676. But the tax levy amount is $189,876 and $21,000. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, please, sir.
Motion, sir. Billy Joe and Mary, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, four, none again. Okay, request by Ann Ballard, regarding east, Ann, you're front and center.
I don't like being front and center.
We can't hear you back.
Oh, my voice carries.
Get up there, tell the cameras to see. There you go. That's fine, I just-
I won't have one to talk on here.
We can hear you better and the tape will pick it up better up there.
I have a neighbor that put up a fence across the east and I talked to Ray several times about it. And so the other day I thought I'd go over and trim on my side of fence and Ray told him to put, if I understood it right, to put the fence across each end of the east. What he done, he didn't wait for Ray to come and measure. So my husband come to me, it's right after I had surgery, and he says, "Ann," says, "Mr. Hightower is putting up a fence across the east." I said, "You're kidding." And I went and looked and there was the post up and I should have called Ray then, but I didn't. But what I'm saying, I went over the other day, but I can't get over there now because I'd be on his property. He put the fence, his gates, like Ray requested, up by his garage and he's got a utility building over there and there's another fence over there. I don't know how the city could get down through there. Of course they'll have to cut it down, I guess. But he attached my fence and didn't say nothing. So I got out there and I was still weak, but I, Cece told me, "That's my two neighbors." They got kinda irritated by it. And so we undone the, I undone the fence because Cece said, "If I let him stay attached to my fence, well then, if I ever decided to want a private fence instead of the cyclone fence, he could keep me from it." But I went over the other day, he's got, not, I don't know, it's his renters, I guess, and they're real sweet people, I don't want you to think that. But Mr. Hightower needs to do some, anyway, they had a big old room locked through there and a chain and I couldn't get over there. And then my sister says, "Well, Ann, you might not be able to do that because that's on his property, it's not across the east." So I'd like for him to take it down just between us because I don't think he had any business putting it across there. He should have waited for Ray to give the okay on it.
Ann, excuse me. After he put the fence across, oh, I think it was about the last time that I was down there, you know, we measured and we looked, you were out there with us. Your fence is on the east, too?
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I was told when I moved there, a joint parent, they come out after I moved there. When did they change it? The line is right between the water meter and if you look up there on the other end, there's concrete pour. When they changed it through the years, I don't know, there's a lot of, it's not you, it's probably, you know, it's probably mixed up in the change of management or something, I don't know.
Well, on the plat, that's the edge hill addition-
Well, on the plat, that's the edge hill addition.
Well, there's no one else that's put a fence up. Oh, there's a fence on that side and a fence on that end.
It was back in nineteen fifty-eight.
Let's see, how much over there?
See?
Sixty-three.
Here you are. And this plat shows a sixteen-foot utility easement. Half of it is on you, half, and here Stacy, half of it's on them. John, half of it's on them, so forth. And the other half, twelve-eight feet, is on these houses that face Haining Street.
Well, you say my house is on the easement?
Your fence.
My fence?
Yes, ma'am.
How much of it?
Well, if your fence is on the line, uh, it'd be eight feet of it.
No, I put it four inches inside what I thought was my line.
Well, it would be seven feet and eight inches.
Yeah, but she don't have the alley block with her fence on the line. The other guys got the alley block, she couldn't even get through. They've got locks on the gate. I bet y'all don't even have a key to lock, too.
It's not an alley.
In an alley, in an easement, it's high side?
Uh, there is, no. Uh, there's seven feet and eight inches of it inside and fence. And there's eight feet and four inches of it inside the neighbor's fence.
But I got a permit to cut that fence up and make a manager, and that year's gone. Maybe that's changed since then.
If we had to get in there, yes, we would have to take the fence up.
We got bolt cutters to get the lock off of it.
But really, he shouldn't have tied her fence without asking her. No, no, agree on it. And he's got a lock on you.
And he, and my honeysuckle, he just cuts them down. I figured he went to school to be aggressive and he must be aggressive, as Pop Billy Ray tells me. And so, but still, and he put, you ask him to put up a gate, why didn't he put it across the easement where I could get in and out? If I go up to his garage and go through his gate, I feel like I'd be illegal. And I don't wanna be illegal.
Well, it's his property. The city just has a easement for the utility lines.
I'm talking about the double gate that you told him to put across the easement and he didn't, he put it up by his garage.
But four feet, uh, four inches from your fence is his property.
You mean his easement?
Well, if you're a property, it's just an easement. City has the right to go in there and put in water.
Well, I've got a right to use it too, in Canada.
No, man. No, it's private property.
So in other words, hey, neighbors could put a fence up across there, too, if they own that.
Since nobody else put a fence up there, I do not understand why, that he didn't put it up like everybody else. See, uh, me and Stacy and the rest have our fences over here and here's the easement. And everybody else put them over there and that way we have access to go. I walk through the post office, run them and get out in the traffic.
Sure, I'm saying, the neighbors-
I'm not trying to be outrageous or anything.
To, to their property line.
Yeah, to their property.
Well, we could discourage it, but, and we could try to let them know that if we have any, we'd have to take their fence up. But there's fences on easements all over town. He, he should not have come to her fence. There's no question about that. And see, it goes on down, uh, across, uh- I believe it. She's got one or two locks. Okay, yeah. It goes on down.
She don't run it, do you?
It's fourteen.
Yes, I know, but Nancy Spies is not able to anymore and he's not well.
Where did he put the lock and jay?
Oh, up there on his double gate by his garage. And Stacy's getting on his property, it's what somebody, I can't even get down that, or easement, I mean.
I tell you what, Danny, I tell you what you girls need to do. You need to get you a ten-foot ladder and just straddle your back fence before you go over and come down.
Only thing I was afraid of. I get over there and trim my honeysuckle.
That way, all you and your-